Thank you very much. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Mesa City Council meeting for May the 22nd. All council members are present except for Mr. Winkle, who is excused. We'll begin our meeting today with an invocation offered by Dr. Clyde Chilton of the Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be offered by Councilmember Kevin Thompson. Please stand for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
All heads are now bowed and our eyes are now closed. Most gracious and eternal heavenly fathers, it's once again we want to thank you for another day's journey. We come now praying for this council, this government entity, that you have allowed the people to appoint. We pray that you would go with their intellect, their minds, their hearts. They would do the best interests of the people. We pray that Lord that you continue to watch them, guard them, and guide them, lead them, and continue to lead us, these your people, in a manner that is pleasing to your sight. We thank you for this day and this opportunity. We pray an mighty blessing upon this council right now in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. I invite Mr. Kevin Christopher to come forward to read the consent agenda. Mr. Christopher, I do note that since our meeting downstairs, I've received a request to pull Agenda Item 9 and 9A from the consent agenda, so there's no need to read that portion of the consent.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk can be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, the blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Beijing Noodle House, 1440 South Country Club Drive. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Manak Korean BBQ, 1135 South Dobson Road. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Pink Pepper Thai Cuisine, 1941 West Guadalupe Road. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Planet Sub, 1641 South Stapley Drive. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Roberto's at Springdale Village, 7255 East Broadway Road. Item 4A, act on one-year renewal contract for the Safety Shoe Program from the Human Resources Department. Item 4B, act on one-year renewal contract for heavy-duty automotive body repair services for the Fleet Services Department. Item 4C, act on term contract for network equipment for the Mesa Public Libraries as requested by the Library Services Department. Item 4D, act on one-year renewal contract for roll-off refuse containers for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Item 4E, act on contract to purchase additional and upgraded wireless network analysis and security tools for the Information Technology Department. Item 4F, act on three-year term contract for asbestos and lead-based paint abatement services for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. This annual contract's funded by the Environmental Compliance Fee and Capital Improvement Program CIP funds. Item 4G, act on contract to purchase four replacement forensic computers for the Police Department. Item 4H, act on three-year term contract for heavy-duty ballistic body armor for the Police Department SWAT team. The initial purchase is a grant funded by the Arizona Department of Homeland Security. Item 4I, act on contract to ratify emergency purchase of a 911 backup recording system as requested by the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. This purchase is funded by authorized 2013 public safety bonds. Item 4J, act on one-year renewal contract for advanced traffic controllers and software for the Transportation Department. Item 4K, act on contract to purchase five light-duty cab and chassis vehicles, two replacements for the Transportation Department, and two replacements and one addition for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Department. Transportation's purchase is funded by the local street sales tax fund, and environmental management and sustainability's purchase is funded by the Capital Enterprise Fund. Item 4L, act on two-year term contract for sludge screen machine rental for the Water Resources Department for the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant. This contract's 58% funded by the towns of Gilbert and Queen Creek and 42% funded by Mesa. Item 4M, act on contract to purchase one replacement pickup truck for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4N, act on job order master contract for water and wastewater construction services. Item 5A, act on resolution regarding Z-17-011, the 5,400 block of South Power Road located south of railroad on the east side of Power Road. This request will allow for development of a medical marijuana facility. Item 5B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with 3W Management LLC for a mixed-use development of approximately 2 and 3/4 acres of city-owned property located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Palmeroy. Item 5C, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Hickey Family Foundation to accept funding for overtime, equipment, and training for the Police Department to combat domestic minor sex trafficking and to comply with the requirements set forth in the award notice. Item 5D, act on resolution supporting the submission of a grant application by Child Crisis Arizona to the Tahana Odom Nation for their Arizona Kinship Services Program and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5E, act on resolution supporting the submission of a grant application by Mesa Art Center to the Tahana Odom Nation for the Creative Aging Arts Engagement for Adults with Dementia and Their Care Partners Program and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds. Item 5F, act on resolution supporting the submission of a grant application by East Valley Adult Resources to the Tahana Odom Nation for their Meals on Wheels Program and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5G, act on resolution supporting the submission of a grant application by the Gene Lewis Boxing Club to the Tahana Odom Nation for their Every Child a Champion After School Program and authorizing the city manager to accept and administer subsequent awarded funds as a pass-through grant. Item 5H, act on resolution modifying fees and charges to the Arts and Culture Department. Item 5I, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Business Services Department. Item 5J, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Development Services Department. Item 5K, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Engineering Department. Item 5L, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for Mesa Municipal Court. Item 5M, act on resolution modifying fees and charges for the Transportation Department. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance regarding Z-17-013, the 6,800 to 9,200 blocks of East Pecos Road located east of Power Road and west of Ellsworth Road in the north and south sides, rezoned to create the Pecos Road Employment Opportunity Zone. This request will establish zoning to guide future development of employment and industrial uses. Item 7A, act on subdivision plot, northeast corner of Main Street and Lindsay Road, the 2,800 to 2,900 blocks of East Main Street located on the northeast corner of Main Street and Lindsay Road. Item 7B, approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Red Mountain Asset Fund 1 and Red Mountain Asset Fund 2 to facilitate redevelopment of a retail commercial center located at 2,840 East Main Street. And Item 8A, act on subdivision plot Mesa Technology Business Park, the 9,600 block of East Elliot Road and the 3,400 to 3,600 blocks of South 96th Street located east of the northeast corner of Ellsworth and Elliot Roads. Mayor and council members, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Mr. Klaspel, do we have any additional requests to speak on any item on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. I previously noted that Agenda Item 9 and 9A have been removed from the consent agenda. Council, please, I note that Mr. Freeman has made a motion for approval of the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Glover. Please cast your vote. Thank you. The vote is unanimous, five in favor, and Mr. Winkle excused. The next item on our agenda will be to address the items that are not on the consent agenda. We will take first Item 9 and 9A. I know we're being handed a few more. Okay. I do have, this is the, for the record, this item is to take action on the tentative adoption of the following proposal, fiscal year 1718 budget, and to take action on the tentative adoption of the fiscal year 1718 budget. I know this has been the subject of frankly, a few months of presentations to council. Mr. Brady, do you think it's important to have any additional presentation from staff or do you want to go with the multiple meetings we've already had?
I think we've covered most of the subjects, Mayor, so we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I do have two requests to speak. I invite forward first Mr. Nathan Schlitz. Mr. Schlitz, please state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nathan Schlitz, address 123 North Centennial Way here in the city of Mesa. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, Mr. City Manager, as I said, my name is Nathan Schlitz. I served the city for 12 years as an officer and a detective with the Mesa Police Department. I grew up in Mesa. My family lives in Mesa. My family currently are small business owners in Mesa. I'm now honored to serve the men and women of the Police Department as the Executive Director for the Mesa Police Association, which is a Mesa business and a Mesa Chamber of Commerce member. The Association represents over 650 sworn and civilian Police Department personnel that serve our community. In Mr. Brady's earlier email to city employees this year, he notes the city is experiencing increased economic growth. Mr. Brady notes that construction sales taxes are 20% ahead of the last year's collections. Sales tax receipts are expected to end the year ahead of the amount expected. In fact, sales tax revenues are at a record high, increasing over $10 million from fiscal year 1415. The city is also recommending utility rate adjustments affecting solid waste, electric, natural gas, and water rates, all leading to increased city revenue. In 2017, spring training came to the city again, bringing fans to Sloan Park and Ho Com Field. Attendance records were set by both the Cubs and the Athletics, meaning increased sales tax revenues from those venues. The city continues to develop areas such as Eastmark, bringing in thousands of new residents and increased revenue. However, while the city's total revenues continue to increase and grow, the city continues to ask public safety to sacrifice and cut their budget. The most recent request to cut department budgets by 5% is yet one more cut that hurts public safety and only hurts the service the city provides to its community. Our association has been told many times, there's only so much of the pie to go around, and yet public safety continues to have our slice of the pie diminish, not grow as the pie grows. The Mesa Police Association is asking for the support of city leadership as these budget discussions continue and are voted on. As the city grows and expands, we cannot leave public safety behind. We all have the same vision of keeping Mesa and our citizens safe and providing the customer service they deserve, but that does come with ever-increasing costs as the city grows. Let's work together to keep Mesa safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Nathan.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, our budget is currently $17 million in the red. Would you guys propose that we take the cuts from the other parts of the city?
Can you repeat your question, sir? I'm sorry.
Our budget is negative $17 million in our general fund. Where would you propose that we make the additional cuts to allocate more funds towards public safety or the Police Department?
I don't think that cuts should come from a department that is bare bones as it is. Unfortunately, there have to be priorities, and public safety must be a priority with the city. We also believe that some of the numbers attributed to the pension reform are due to mismanaged policies by the city in the past, so we would ask that the city take care of public safety now. That's all that we're asking for.
You believe that public safety money was mismanaged by the city?
I believe that the payment of pension funds in the past has been mismanaged by the city.
In which way?
If you want to talk about that later, we can discuss that.
I mean, I'm curious. You guys are asking for money. I'm just curious where the funds are coming from.
I'm not asking for money. I'm asking for the Police Department's fair share. As other departments grow, I think the City Department should grow as well.
So I believe public safety right now represents around 62.9% of our general fund budget. What allocation of the general fund budget would public safety or the Police Department be okay with?
Starting with not asking for budget cuts is a good start, but I'm not prepared to give you a specific number.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. The next card I have to speak is Jeff Cross. Welcome, Jeff. Please give us your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, sir. My name is Jeff Cross. I live at 8872 East Red Mountain Lane in Gold Canyon, Arizona. I've been an employee with the city of Mesa now for 17 years. Over those 17 years, I've seen the city slip from the 32nd largest to the 36th, and now currently 38th. I feel that's a lack of city councils previous from not trying to go after businesses, for not having a property tax. Everyone that's in front of us has a property tax. One of the things I look at when I talk about budget, we've been cutting police and fire over the last five years. I get that. I sit on a board as similar as you for superstition fire and medical. We deal with budget constraints daily. In somewhere, you have to make a cut. Jeremy Whitaker asked the previous speaker what he would look at, and my solution to you guys would be looking at public safety's pensions, current House bill that was passed to extending our payments from 20 years to 25 or 30 years. I come to you with a solution. On the previous budgets, I've never seen you guys talk about that. The only thing I've seen you guys talk about on 420 of 2017, three of the members of this council talked about allowing AMR to take over EMS service. I take offense to that. I take pride in the work I do. I don't know if the city council's aware, but AMR is under investigation from DHS right now for 30 of their members falsifying their BLS cards. You lose control once you give it to an outside service.
I don't want to, I'll give you some additional seconds at the end of this, but folks, throughout the evening, I need to understand we don't do that, okay? We're here to allow, you can groan all you want, but we're here to hear from people speak, not to have the meeting disrupted. So I appreciate the enthusiasm that brought you here, but please contain yourself. Continue.
A lot of the points that were brought up before, I won't bring up again, but one of the points that was brought up and kind of glossed over was Eastmark. I think there's currently 12,000 to 15,000 residents that live down there. When that property was developed, the developer gave a plot of land for the Fire Department to build a fire station there. I think the residents of that community deserve that fire station. That community grows two to three times because they hold, I believe, 100 events a year. All I ask is that you look at other solutions, other ways to raise funds, and I know that you're doing that, but one of the ways I don't think that you were looking at was the way to extend public safety pensions from 20 years to 25, maybe even 30. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Mr. Whitaker.
So, the city doesn't control pension reform. It's control the state legislature. Are you assuming PSPRS?
Correct. It's already passed. Governor signed it. We're currently looking at this out of superstition. It allows, the law allows, for organizations to basically defer their costs, is what I'm going to say, because I don't know all that much about it, but we currently pay on a 20-year system, and they're allowing people to go from anywhere from 20, you could stay at 20 if you want, or all the way up to 30.
Can you comment on the amortization?
He's correct. That just came. I just got the letter last week, so we're looking at that. So yes, Mayor and Council, today, the amortization schedule for pension liability is set at 20 years, a 20-year payoff. Legislation was just approved, and because of the way it was approved, there's actually an emergency approval, so it allows cities, if before, I think the end of June, can make a decision by resolution of the council to extend, that's the word I use, extend the payment beyond 20 years. And so we're looking at that, and the idea is that the possibility, we all know there's still a hall case, there's other variables that are going to affect pension in the near future. If the council were to decide to go in that direction, what we would suggest is, right now, we're getting hit about $12 million in additional pension costs that are built into this budget. If there are savings, what we would probably recommend to council, again, this is early, is we use that to offset these future impacts that we're going to get from the settlement of the lawsuit or these other variables that are going to hit us in the future. So what you're saying is correct, but it's real fresh too, right? We just got it last week, so.
Yeah, literally last week. And as far as the hall case goes, my understanding is that those payments that are due to the employees from, if that passes, would basically be deferred by PSPRS, that you wouldn't have to make those payments, so it's not that the money would need to go towards that. PSPRS would just tell you that you didn't have to pay for the next six months, and that you'd be paying the employees the portion of what's overdue. That's my understanding.
Well, I think the point is we don't have the hall decision yet, so that's.
Correct.
That would be a nice, I guess we'll find out if that's true or not when the hall decision comes through. Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. So that concludes the public comment on Agenda Item 9 and 9A. Council, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion to take action on this item? Thank you. A motion has been made by Councilmember Glover, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your vote. The vote is unanimous in favor of 99A, with Mr. Winkle absent and excused. The next item, we are moving Agenda Item 10A to the conclusion of the meeting, so the next item is Agenda Item 11A. That's to conduct a public hearing and take action on a resolution approving the annual assessment for the Mesa Town Center Improvement District. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Mr. Klaspel, has anyone from the public requested to speak on this item? Okay, thank you. Do any council members have any items they'd like to address relative to this public hearing? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Now Agenda Item 11B is a resolution approving the 2017 district assessments for the Mesa Town Center Improvement Districts, number 228. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? And a second, I see that Mr. Freeman has made the motion. Mr. Thompson is seconded. Please cast your vote. The vote is favor, with Mr. Winkle absent and excused. The next item on our agenda is Item 12A, to conduct a public hearing and take action on ordinances adopting modified utility terms, rates, fees, and charges. This hearing is for Items 12B through and including Items 12G. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Klaspel, has anyone requested to speak on this item? Thank you. Do any council members want to address this item? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion to approve all the ordinances for Items 12B through 12G related to electric, natural gas, water, wastewater, solid waste, and utility service fees? I see that the second, a motion has been made by Vice Mayor Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please cast your votes. The vote is unanimous with Mr. Winkle absent and excused. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Item 13B, a resolution approving the five-year capital improvement program. Is there a motion to approve that? I see Mr. Luna has made that motion, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. Again, the outcome is unanimous with Mr. Winkle absent and excused. That brings us back now, I believe, to Agenda Item 10A. Have I missed anything, Mr. Smith? Or I think we got everything. We'll do items from citizens present at the end of the meeting. Okay. Well, I take it back. Mr. Klaspel, do we have any requests to speak, or items from citizens present? Okay, well then, we'll consider Agenda Item 14 having been completed as well. We will now address Agenda Item 10A, and that's to take action on a three-year term contract with Core Civic for private jail services for the Police Department. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here, and I mean that sincerely. I think this is a great example of free speech and of government being responsive and listening to the concerns of our citizens, so in all sincerity, thank you for being here. You've been exceptionally good citizens tonight, and I appreciate that very much. Just to remind you of what I mentioned earlier, where there are some ground rules. We don't allow outbursts. We don't allow disruptive behavior. We try to be respectful. We're here to hear what people have to say, and so anything, any behavior that would distracts or detracts from our ability to listen, to see people exercise their right to speak is not going to be allowed. As you know, and as we discussed downstairs, we have a lot of folks that have requested to speak on this, more than we are able to accommodate, quite literally. So I assure you, everybody who has filled out a blue card, I will read your name and note that you're here and that you're, that you're in favor or opposed to this item. I have requested that those who want to express their lack of support for this item, that they consolidate around 12 speakers. I appreciate very much your willingness to do that, so we will hear from 12 speakers as well, in addition to reading in the names of all who came and wish to have their opposition noted for the record. This has been the subject of several council presentations from the Police Department, but I do know that we discussed this last Thursday, and there were some questions that were raised at that time, so it might be good to address any outstanding questions that we have. Chief, would you step forward? And I don't mind kicking things off. I jotted down a few questions that I recall from our meeting last Thursday, and I don't know if we have a representative from Core Civic here as well. Is there, is there anyone here from Core Civic?
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay, yes, I do see. Sir, why don't you come up and sit in the front, because we may have some, this might be, you might be asked to respond to some questions. Chief, some, and council, if you don't mind, I'll just kick it off, and I'm anxious for you, this is our opportunity to ask any questions of the chief, and then after that, we'll hear from, that might resolve some of the questions that would come up during people's presentations, so we'll get everything out in the open and then talk about it. Chief, there was some criticism, as I understand it, we started this process several years ago, of investigating alternatives to sending our misdemeanor inmates to the county jail. And I know when the RFP initially went out, that was a few years ago. There've been some questions raised. Is the current recommendation based on numbers from several years ago or on more current numbers? Can you address that, please?
Mayor, members of council, good evening. Yes, the RFP was sent out in 2012, and during the last few years, we have refreshed, certainly as we've carefully gone through the various respondents, we have refreshed it with current numbers. So in this particular contract that we see, it is really addressing our current conditions with a look at the history of the rates that certainly we have paid, and then secondly, what that means in current times. So it's carefully done. It took some time. It's a very complex process, and I think we've reached a point where, and I think in this case, we brought forward a counsel for consideration.
Thank you very much. I know there have also been questions raised in the media and other places that this might appear to be an attractive financial arrangement for the city, but that there are other collateral costs that maybe weren't considered, and I know that one of the issues that was raised was a question of liability. And so I welcome Mr. Smith or others that might have more information about this. Does the city, are we exposed to additional liability for lawsuits for, as we know, prisons almost invite claims, so there surely will be claims, and what is the city's liability in those situations?
Mayor and council, let me tell you what the contract provides as far as liability and insurance. The contract mimics the provisions that are within the state contract that involves the housing of felons, and so we have those same provisions within this contract that deals with misdemeanors. It includes a requirement of $20 million of liability coverage, and it includes broad-form indemnity provisions. So we have those same type of, those same provisions that are within the state contract are also within this contract as far as insurance and indemnity.
So up to 20, 25 million dollars, I think, I thought I heard earlier, the figure 25 million dollars, the city is indemnified from claims made by prisoners for any of a million different reasons while they're in the custody of the contractor.
Correct. There's a, the contract provides for, requires a $20 million coverage. They've actually provided us a form with 25, with excess carrier or excess umbrella policy, so the contract only requires 20, though, but they've provided 25.
Okay, thank you very much. We're just ticking through the questions that I recall from last Thursday, so feel free to chime in, council. Another question that was raised last Thursday had to do with work release, and I know that Judge DeFoya is present. Judge, would you mind coming forward? I think we might have a question or two for you. Thanks. Judge DeFoya is our great head magistrate of the Mesa City Court. We're very proud of our court. They do a great job. Judge, if we move to this, this system of housing our misdemeanor inmates in Florence, is that going to preclude them from the opportunity to have work release, or how will that work?
Mayor and members of the city council know work release is a matter of statute and judicial discretion, and when it's, and we, for example, on a DUI, they have a right to work release 12 hours in, 12 hours out of jail. That won't be affected. Also, on mandatory jail for DUIs and any other crime that we send a person to jail that has to go to jail, we have home detention, which means they don't end up in jail. On DUIs, they may have to, a percentage of the days may have to be done in jail, but the balance could be done on home detention. So you do have work release, go to jail, get out 12 hours, 12 hours in and 12 hours out. That's not precluded, and by rule of law, they have a right to do that.
Thank you. Judge DeFoya, I had a private conversation with you a few days ago about this topic, and during the course of that conversation, you mentioned to me that, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is there any advantage to having? want to put words in your mouth, but i- is there any advantage to having our misdemeanor population together in one facility? Would, i- is that a good thing? Is that a bad thing? Will that allow for people to ultimately spend less time in jail, because they're easier to, to track down and get to court? Or, it seemed like you had a, a thought on that topic, and I, and I hadn't heard that previously, so.
Well, my, my thought on, on that is this, that when you have our detention officers leave at 3:00 in the morning to bring 12 prisoners back to court, 12 to 14, back to court, to be there by 8:00 or 8:30, that's, that's a lot of effort, because the county jail, and I've been, I've, I've been there. I've gone with the detention officers years ago. And you go to one location, it used to be you could go to one location, but now they have prisoners throughout the, throughout the jail, to wrangle all over the jail. There's 5,000 to 8,000 people in the jail, and they have to go place to place to pick them up, to get us back, get them back to my court by 8:00 or 8:30 in the morning. So, it does make sense. And a lot of times, prisoners don't answer. We do have an order to bring by any means whatsoever, but oftentimes prisoners are not brought back because they refuse to answer their name or, or refuse to come. And so, that's, my, my answer is, we need a, a system where we can more easily transport prisoners to court for their benefit, because once they get to court, we can talk conditions release.
So, the easier they are retreat, to retrieve, the less likely that they'll spend additional time in jail because they weren't accessible for release?
That's my view.
Okay, thank you. Another issue, thank you, sir, from, from CoreCivic. And I apologize for not recalling your name, sir, but at our meeting last Thursday, as you know, there were allegations that CoreCivic, I'm, I'm sorry, are there additional questions? I, I apologize.
Before Judge DeFoye.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
For the judge, I have a question.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Judge. Mr. Whitaker. Okay. Mr. Whitaker, go ahead.
Judge DeFoye, welcome, and thank you for coming out tonight. Who appoints you to your position?
The mayor and the city council.
And do you believe that political donations having, you know, an influence on politics in America?
In America, United States of America, you see it in the United States Senate, the presidency. So, the answer is, it can have an effect, yes.
Sure. And are you concerned in any way that if we privatize our jails, that that will increase the amount of lobbying dollars that come to city council and mayoral races in the future, which could impact the judges that we appoint to your position in the future?
You know, I've been a judge 34 years, and, and, and the misdemeanor court, the limited jurisdiction courts, and the, the process that you have set up here in Mesa, similar to other cities like Phoenix, has a judicial advisory board. And they, they interview everyone that goes through that process. And number one, they have to select who they're going to interview, then they recommend three names to the council. So, there's a buffer there, where that board is, they're comprised of a superior court judge, court of appeals judge, two lawyers, and two members of the community. So, the buffer is there to protect the independence of the judiciary. And the, the, the United States is, and, and this is my feeling, the only place in the United States where you have neutrality is the courts. The courts are a sanctuary for neutrality. And anything that would affect that neutrality in a courtroom is, is not, in my mind, legal. So, so you have an independent board right now that you appoint with a, like, I'm going to repeat myself, court of appeals judge, superior court judge, a lawyer from the community, another lawyer from the Maricopa County Bar, and two members of the community. That's it as independent reviewers for the city council. They make the recommendation.
The board is appointed by city council in that specific committee?
Well, yeah, the, and the mayor will appoint the lawyer from the Maricopa County Bar. But yes, and the, the process, and even for the court of appeals judge, it'll go up to them, and they'll rotate another court of appeals judge there, the same for the superior court judge. So, there's a, there's a lot of room there for neutrality and protecting the neutrality of the judiciary.
That's interesting. So, you would say that the Supreme Court is also protected by the neutrality, or is that an exception in your opinion?
Well, the Supreme Court of the.
United States.
Of the United States. Once they're there, yes. But you know, the process, if you'll, if you've watched, and I've watched every process that's gone on from Borg on on, I've watched the interviews. And anytime they're, you know, a judge cannot make an opinion or a ruling saying, this is the way I'm going to rule, until they've heard everything, all the evidence before them. So, if you, if you'll note, when the senate is asking questions of that Supreme Court justice, they, they can't give an opinion, because they really cannot give an opinion as to something they don't know about and wasn't represented by both sides. They just can't. And if you look at all the hearings, you'll never see them giving opinions. They can't, by rule of law.
Okay. I respect your opinion, and thank you for coming out again.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Judge. I have a couple of questions, and it kind of probably segues with, with my colleague, Mr. Whitaker. First question is, who sets the laws that you enforce in your court? Is that done by city council, or is that done by the state legislature, or by the Supreme Court, or?
Okay, the laws that we apply in our court, and the executive branch is the one that files them, the prosecutor, are state laws, and also city code violations. And both can be Class I misdemeanors, with the same types of penalty. And so, we have city code violations and state law violations. Now, the Supreme Court passes a rules of law, I mean, a rules that we have to comply with in the courtroom that have to do, again, with the rights and, and the enforcement of the rights for defendants and victims. For example, April 3rd, they have a new rule that came out from the Supreme Court that says anytime we're ahead of the ballgame in Mesa, and, and having people in jail, we're, we're like five or 10 years ahead of other courts. And we've led in this effort, but they passed a rule that said when you're going to keep a person in jail on a bond. Because if someone can't get out of jail on a $1050 bond, why can't they get out? They don't have the family support or the money. Any little job they have, they'll lose. Well, now, this new rule came out that they have to be represented by counsel at that time to the, to fight for conditions of release, an OR, known recognizance release. And in our court, we're the only court in the state of Arizona, limited jurisdiction court, misdemeanor court, that has electronic monitoring, so they don't have to, to do it. But, so, we do have to follow the rules of court that are passed by the Supreme Court in enforcing due process.
And then my second question is, with the, the laws or with the cases that you're seeing now, I know that one, some, a lot of the emails that we've been getting as council members have asked or have stated that, you know, we would end up putting more people in jail to, because there's a, a benefit to the city or what have you. But it's my understanding that you're actually reducing the number of folks at your, at your jail, or that your prosecutors are actually sending to jail on misdemeanors.
Yeah, and a lot of that is pretrial release. Now, if you're sentenced on a DUI, that's mandatory jail. There's no discretion. You have to put them in jail for 60, 90 days or whatever, or 10, suspend nine. For pretrial release, again, like I said, we're the only court in the state that has electronic monitoring to release a person if they can't post a bond. And so, we do, I, we're, we even have, we, you know, when we're talking about the homeless and the mentally ill, we've, Mesa is the pioneer court in this. We suggested the idea of having the competency hearings in this courthouse that we have here. And that reduced the failure to appear rate from 40% to 5%. And those were in jail for 60 to 90 days before they got a competency hearing. So, we've already reduced the jail there. And so, and the same goes for PosdeCristo. We actively go to PosdeCristo and have court there. That's a homeless area where, where people eat, and, but before they have their meals, we have court in session where we can take care of any pleas they want to do, cancel any warrants, and thereby saving incarceration costs. But it's really a service to the people. And the bottom line here, as far as jail goes, the bottom line is, you keep people in jail on a high bond if there are risks to public safety. But here's the other part of it. If you're really rich and you have a lot of money, you can get out of jail. So, that's what the Task Force for Justice for All, in reference to the poor, the mentally ill, and the homeless, and veterans, comes into play, saying, we have to make that a level area. Just because you're poor doesn't mean you have to stay in jail, but public safety is an issue. And we're very sensitive to that in our city.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Judge DeFoye, for visiting us. Have you had an opportunity to visit the, the jail?
The Maricopa County Jail?
The jail over in, the proposed private jail in Florence?
No, I've been, I've been to their courthouse, but I've not been to their private jail.
So, it's, it's a bit of a distance. How do family members visit, if they want to visit their detainee that's in jail? How do they get there?
If it's me, if it's me, and I drive that once a week, I'd rather drive there than to go through rush hour traffic all the way to Phoenix 25 miles away. It's quicker and, but the answer is, how does a family member do it? I don't know.
Okay. Because that would be, that's the assumption, that you would have a vehicle to, to get there.
That's right. We ought to visit, but you know, what we're trying to do is reduce, reduce so a person's not in jail more than eight, eight days to get him back to court. And so.
Thank you, Judge. Chief, I, I know we have had some, thank you, Judge. Can you comment on the visitation issue? Because that, that's been raised before, and I think it's important to, to talk about that.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, it's, it's an important issue. First of all, how do you get a chance to have visitation if, if the inmate or prisoner is there for any substantial time? So, two possible ways, certainly one is visit in person, as mentioned. Obviously, some do not have vehicles or other ways to get there. What we're setting up here in our lobby of the Police Department is ability to have video conferencing, and be able to visit by video as well. So, for those who can't, they have that option to do as well. So, we hope that provides access in either direction based on their availability or their ability to travel.
Thank you. I have another question that came up Thursday. It's for the gentleman from Core. There were certain, as you know, there were allegations on Thursday morning that the facility, that not, not the Florence facility, but the Eloy facility, had an unusual number of deaths occurring at that facility. And I think we asked you to respond to that, and at the time, you, you didn't have, you know, the facts at your fingertips. Do you have any additional information or any additional light to share on that accusation?
We were asked to go back to 2002, and from 2002, excuse me, 2012, that's what I was, to present time, there were five. Do you want the year break? Do you have the year break done? My apologies.
Sir, Commander Beaton with the Police Department. They provide us with these numbers. I've got them kind of broken down here. I can kind of go over them with you a little bit.
Please.
So, we had five deaths total at Eloy from 2012 to 2016, a five-year time span, and three deaths total at Florence from 2012 to 2016, for eight deaths total. Those deaths are broken down between suicides, natural causes, and other.
How many in the other category?
One in the other category, and it was a homicide.
Okay. And the nature of the, the inmates, were those, are those long-term INS detainees, or are they, what were they?
They were, the Florence were marshals, and at Eloy, they're INS. That's correct.
Okay, so marshals, those would be folks that are federal prisoners?
They're all federal. That's correct.
And these are penitentiary type?
They're all felons convicted, yes.
So, multiple-year sentences?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yes, thank you, Chris.
I know PD was going to look into it. How many deaths have occurred in a county during that same time period?
Mayor, Councilmember Glover, the deaths that occurred in a county in that same time period, we have 2012 to 2016, a five-year period. We had 42 deaths occurred at MCSO, broken down the same, breakdown suicides, natural causes, and other. We also were able to look at, because MCSO does deal with a lot more people, a lot more inmates, we broke them down to deaths per thousand. So, just to kind of compare compatible numbers. So, MCSO had 1.06 deaths per thousand inmates. Florence had .32 deaths per thousand inmates, to be comparable.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Freeman. Commander, maybe you could walk me through the process when a person's arrested here in Mesa, and they're taken to jail. Currently, they're taken to MCSO, correct? And, and in the population, as the person is booked and processed, they're put into a, explain to me after that.
So, what occurs, excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, what occurs is they're arrested here, brought to our facility. Are you talking both felony and misdemeanors, or just misdemeanors, or just in general?
No, just the misdemeanors.
Misdemeanors brought to our facility, where they're held until, for their initial arraignment. Their initial arraignment is they see a judge, Mesa City Court Judge, and then they're either, if they're held over after that initial arraignment, they'll be transported down to county. And at county, they get transported, all the prisoners are transported together in one of our vans. And at county, they go through the, the pre-booking process where they get, go to medical and get, get placed into the county facility.
How much does it cost to book a patient, inmate, prisoner?
The initial booking fee is going up to just over $300, I believe. I don't have that exact number on me right now.
Okay. So, those misdemeanor people, are they put in with felons at that time? I mean, is it mixed population, or is there any separation between the misdemeanor and the felon population?
Sir, thank you. Just for that exact number, the booking fee for fiscal year 1617 is $306.84. And it's going up to $325.65 in 1718, so.
So, if the contract's approved, what's the difference between the two fees?
There is no booking fee if we go to CoreCivic. It's just a straight per diem rate.
And then, how much per day is the difference between the two, MCSO and the contract?
The housing rate at MCSO currently is $90.37, and it's going up to $101.72 in 1718. And the negotiated rate with CoreCivic will be $67.96, I believe.
Okay. My last question is, if the contract's approved, these prisoners would go to their own facility, a pod, so to speak, down at CoreCivic? Is that correct? And they'd be isolated, they'd be separate from any of the prisoner population?
Yes, sir, Councilman Freeman. They'll be, we have our own area. They'll be sight and sound separate from all of the prisoners. The males will be kept separate from the females, and the females will even have, be sight and sound separate from the males with the frosted glass, and we'll even have our own separate recreation area where only our people will be let out for recreation.
So, these prisoners, these misdemeanor prisoners, will not interact with any felons at all?
Correct.
Okay. How many, how many inmates do we have at one time? I know, I, I looked at the chart, it was trending down, but there's a, a chart that shows how many prisoners we have per year at any given time.
I can get that for you in a second.
I'm sure you have it.
Thank you, sir. So, average number of inmates housed per day for 1617 was about 133.9 inmates per day is what our average was.
And what's our, our current jail time for any prisoner that we have? What's, is there an average that they're in jail?
We've got 46% of our prisoners are sentenced, just for sentences, sentenced to nine days or less. And when we average the time we pay for prisoners in jail, it averaged between about six to 10 days, so that kind of matched with what the sentences were. So, that's the average time is between six to 10 days in jail. That's just a short period of time.
So, they're not there very long?
Yes, sir.
What you're saying. My last question is, is how many, Judge DeFoye answered this, but how many diversion programs are there available to our, our jail system?
I've got the numbers for.
How many types of diversion systems?
You're talking court diversion or diversion inside the jail?
Court diversions for the judge.
The judge answer that.
Well, you have shoplifting diversion, assault diversion, and minors under 21 who are caught with alcohol. That's another diversion program. So, there's three right now. So there's three right now.
Okay. I think I'm good for now.
Thank you. Counsel, before we listen to public comment, is there any other... I expect we'll have some discussion after public comment, but is there anything you'd like to ask these gentlemen before we move on to public comment?
I have questions for the CoreCivic individual.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Whitaker. Sir, Mr. Whitaker has some questions.
Carlos, nice to meet you in person. Sorry, I was on the phone last time. So my question for you is more of your business model approach that I briefly touched on last time and your incarceration rate. If your shareholders are having a meeting and they're trying to figure out how they can increase the profit of CoreCivic, what options do you guys have to increase your revenue?
What options do we have?
Yes.
We can look at operating models, we could look at infrastructure models, we can look at our designs, we could look at technology...
Specifically from a revenue perspective, not a net profit?
All of those things are considered, every single one of those.
Okay. Is it fair to say that, from a revenue perspective, that the more individuals that your organization jails, the more profit your company will make?
I can say we operate facilities that don't make a profit.
I'm sorry, what's...
That don't make a profit. We can also say that we use our best practices in order to provide cost savings to the partners. Yeah, come on up.
I can give you a more direct answer as well.
Sure, that would be great.
I'm sorry, this is Mr. Steve Owen. He's our public information.
Great. Good evening, Councilmember. My name's Steve Owen. Been with CoreCivic for 22 years. And answer to your question, one of the things that the company has undergone in the past several years was diversification of the services that we offer. So in addition to the traditional correctional services that we provide, we also operate residential reentry centers. We also offer real estate-only solutions to government partners that are only seeking to replace facilities that are antiquated and need to be replaced with more modern facilities.
Right, so I guess I'm just confused how that pertains to the increased revenue, right? I mean, isn't the only way you can increase your revenue is to bring in more prisoners into your facility because you charge them a per...
That is not correct.
No, sir, that's not, that's not accurate.
So if we own a facility, we can lease that facility back.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to treat these gentlemen with respect, okay? So no one's going to interrupt you when you speak. Please give them the same courtesy.
Again, the company's business model for expanding revenues into shareholder value is through diversification of the business offerings that we provide. And that's also consistent with our mission, which is to affect more rehabilitation and reentry to reduce recidivism.
Okay. So I did a little bit of research prior to this meeting, and I was reading through your annual report from 2010. So I have your document from your annual report here, and it identifies that CoreCivic, you know, makes more profit on economies of scale, which is understood, right? You're going to have your base rate, and the more prisoners that you have in your jail, you're going to make more profit, I'm assuming per head, because you have your operational costs that are going to be fixed regardless.
Well, economies of scale also speaks to the fact that because we are a large national company, we are able to command better prices for goods and services that are typically needed to operate correctional facilities.
Sure. So my question more specific to this report, this is one of your reports, and I quote, "Our industry benefits from significant economies of scale, resulting in lower operating costs per inmate as occupancy rates increase. We believe we've been successful increasing the number of residents in our care and continue to pursue a number of initiatives intended to further increase our occupancy and revenue." So it also goes on to say, and I quote, "We recognize that the budgetary constraints our state customers are experiencing will present challenges in obtaining per diem increases and additional inmate populations in the short term." So I guess from your annual report that I'm reading, it sort of directly conflicts with what you're indicating.
Well, that's speaking to two things there. The first one, with the occupancy, you're talking about is speaking to the fact that there are facilities with available occupancy vacancies, and making those available to government partners that have a need for that occupancy is certainly beneficial to both the government partner and the contracts with us, but then also ultimately the company. The second part of that, I'm sorry, mention that, your second portion that you referenced there?
"We recognize that budgetary constraints..."
Yes. That's speaking to the fact that the budgetary, the budgetary situations in various state agencies can be tightened sometimes, and when they are, we have to also make those cuts and tighten as well. And we have done that consistently with many of our government partners.
Okay. I have a few more questions.
And those are shared, those are provided to shareholders and potential shareholders so that they have a complete and transparent view of the company in making investment decisions.
Right, I understand. And I guess that, you know, I also own my own company, and the conversations that you have based around, you know, how do you increase your revenue? My concerns would be that, you know, in your boardroom, your main source of increasing your revenue is increasing heads, which, in my opinion, directly conflicts with what our goal should be as a council, is reducing the amount of prisoners that we put in jail.
But that's simply not the business model that the company has. I understand your perspective on it, but that is not the business model. Our business model has been to diversify the services that we offer. The services that we provide are given in response to expressed needs of government partners. So as they express a need for whether it's capacity or services, real estate-only solutions, we provide those solutions to meet their demands. And by doing a good job of operating facilities and by meeting those demands, that's how we grow revenue. If we don't do a good job, government won't continue to do business with us.
So can you guys speak on your donations to supporting SB 1070?
Absolutely, absolutely none whatsoever. We had absolutely no role whatsoever in that legislation.
I apologize. My facts must be incorrect. I had a...
I believe it's probably coming from an old NPR report, which has long since been corrected by NPR, in which the reporter mistakenly attributed us as having a role in that legislation. We did not. In fact, NPR, another reporter from NPR, weeks later, published another story that correctly identified the correct author of that bill.
Okay, so it is false that you guys made campaign contributions to 30 of the 36 cosponsors of SB 1070?
That's correct. And if you go back and look at that article, there's a correction and clarification.
I apologize. All the fake news out there today, you don't know what to believe, I guess.
I appreciate you asking.
How many federal lobbyists do you guys currently employ?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
How many federal lobbyists do you currently employ?
I don't have an exact number for you. I will tell you that it's probably several dozen, between federal and state and local. And I would caveat that with the fact that our sole customer is government. So by its very nature, 90% or more of any communication with our customer inherently falls under the umbrella of lobbying. And therefore, we do have to retain lobbyists. We have facilities that are located in districts of elected officials. We have responsibility to educate them on those operations and those employees and the impact that those facilities have in their communities. And so we do retain government, government relations officials and lobbyists to help us with that. We also expressly write in all of their contracts that they are prohibited from lobbying on sentencing policies on behalf of the company. That's also in all of our federal lobbying reports, which are publicly available.
The next question I have is on the topic of safety. How do you guys guarantee the safety in the transportation of inmates?
Is there a specific concern?
Yeah, do we, do you subcontract that out, or do you guys personally?
We have a wholly-owned subsidiary service for transportation services, and they have to meet all national, state, and local standards.
But in this particular arrangement, the staff in the Florence facility will be handling the transportation.
Okay. And then has CoreCivic or any of its partners or subsidiaries, including TransCore America, had any deaths occur while transporting inmates?
We would have to go back and research more specifically for you. At my fingertip, I couldn't answer that question for you.
Have you had any inmates escape while they're in custody?
Again, we'd have to go back and research that as it relates to TransCore.
And I think we already discussed the murders at the Eloy facility, but I think there was a conflict between the numbers that I had received and what you guys had previously indicated. What was that number of the actual murders that have occurred? I think you quoted since 2012?
We were asked to go back to 2012. That is correct.
Which was how many?
For which facility?
For Eloy.
For which facility?
The Eloy facility, yeah.
Three suicides.
I can answer that, sir. There are deaths, all kinds, not just murders. There was one homicide that occurred at Florence, but specifically at Eloy, we had three suicides and two died from natural causes from 2012 to 2016, and that is the total. So five total at Eloy.
No homicides.
And then at Florence from 2012 to 2016, which is the facility we're looking at, we had two die from natural causes and one other, which was listed as a homicide. So three total from 2012 to 2016.
Great. And I read a story this morning, maybe you guys can comment. I believe an individual at one of your facilities had committed suicide, being stuck in solitary confinement for an extended period of time. Are you familiar with what happened? I believe it was just in the news this morning or yesterday, if I remember correctly.
There was a detainee death. It was actually, the story you read may have been from this morning, but the incident itself occurred a couple of weeks ago at another facility in another state. That incident is under investigation. We take that very seriously. We work very closely with our government partners to thoroughly investigate if something like that occurs, so we can learn from it and take steps to prevent it from happening again.
So can you comment on the amount of time that the individual spent in solitary confinement?
I can at this point, because that incident is still under investigation by the government partner. We're cooperating fully with their investigation.
And in the specific facility that we're sending our inmates to, what percentage of them experience sexual assault?
I don't have an exact figure for you. We'd be happy to follow up with the data that we do have, although I would say that all of our facilities are required to meet and exceed PRIA standards, the federal standards for Prison Rape Elimination Act. And that includes annual inspections, PRIA inspections. Those inspections, those audits are required to be posted online. We post those online as required, so they're publicly available for all of our facilities.
And I just want to discuss the municipalities that are pulling out of CoreCivic, and I'm hoping that you can comment on each one. From what I could find in my research, there's three. In Indianapolis, their criminal justice system stopped using CoreCivic, or is in the process of stopping using CoreCivic?
I could contact that. I personally spoke to the jail chief in Indianapolis, Marion County in Indianapolis. Is that in Indiana? Is that the one you're talking about, sir?
Yes, the criminal justice, yeah, in Indianapolis.
Yeah, so Marion County, Indiana, is, they have a contract with CoreCivic. I personally spoke to the chief in charge of the jail facility. He said they're actually currently renewing their contract with CoreCivic. That's what they're in the process of.
Okay. And the second one was the central treatment facility in DC.
We didn't speak to anyone in DC, but from what we're looking at, it looks like they fulfilled their 20-year contract, and it didn't, they just didn't renew the contract, not for any mismanagement or any issues. It was just because of a declining jail population was the only thing that we could locate for the reason for the not renewing the contract.
Okay. And then the last one was the Idaho Correctional Center.
We didn't address that one specifically. That contract was not canceled by the state. It was actually going to be rebid. We submitted a letter to the state, putting them on notice that we were not going to submit a proposal for the rebid. Subsequent to that, the state ended up pulling the RFP and made the decision to take the facility back in-house with the state. We worked with them on a smooth transition back to the state.
Great. That's all the questions I have. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you very much. And just for the record, I don't want to confuse anybody. We were talking about an Eloy facility. It's, there's no proposal that Mesa inmates would go to the Eloy facility exclusively the Florence facility, correct?
Exclusively Florence, correct.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Most of our discussion was talking about a prison population versus a jail population. Is that what I'm hearing about a lot of our discussion here? Just comment on that, Commander.
I can answer that, yes, sir. Most of this is, we're talking about a prison population, a multi, a long-term felon population, not the short-term misdemeanor population that we are looking at housing at Florence. We will be the first municipality of its kind to have a contract like this. Nowhere else in the nation do they house just misdemeanors at their facility. All these other, they have five jail contracts currently across the nation, Marion County, Indiana, I can name them all. But all those house felons and misdemeanors as well. We will be the only municipality that's housing just the short-term misdemeanors.
What other governmental agencies currently use the Florence facility?
The United States Marshal Service.
Nobody else, like?
ICE is there. They have a small population there as well.
Okay. No Pinell County or...
No, sir.
Peeta County or... Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. Please take a seat, and we may invite you back up again. I will now start reading the names of individuals that have given, expressed their opposition, and I will, there are two names that I have where they did not express either support or oppose. I suspect that it's opposed. But just for the record, that would be Richard Wall and Natasha Chavez. If you're present, are you in favor or against?
Against.
I was guessing that was the case. Okay, thank you. And now I have a very large stack, so please bear with me. I'm going to read everybody that submitted a card. And again, everybody has, in this stack, has indicated that they are in opposition. Chanel Poe from Phoenix, someone who didn't fill in their name. Brian Barabee from Chandler. Caroline Isaacs from Tucson. Suzanne DeSoto from Chandler. Fred Barlam from Sage Drive, presumably Mesa. Dr. Jay Hydrick from Madrid Lane, city not identified. Jane Dacey, Phoenix. Joanne Marcus, Tempe. Gigi Solero, city not identified. Daisy Menos, city not identified. Charles Cornwell, Mesa. Christina Shelley Gilbert. Carolina Hernandez, Mesa. Karen Latham, Tempe. Benjamin Steele, city not identified. Jocelyn Pacheco, city not identified. Rafael Suarez, Tucson. Patrice Pearson, Mesa. Stephanie Cordell, presumably Mesa. Sue Ellen Allen, city not identified. Danielle Russell, Mountain Vista Drive. Presumably, if you didn't list the city, there's a good chance they're Mesa, I suppose. Tom Brown from Scottsdale. Wade Penland from Mesa. Ryan McGaden from Mesa. Charles Devordier from Mesa. Susan Devorak, Divorsik, from Mesa. Jessica Gronberg, Mesa. Robert Rakrick, city not identified. Heather Hammel from Phoenix. Barbara Miller Egdelby, city not identified. I apologize for the mispronunciation of names. J.J. Johnson from Phoenix. David Doubtfill from Mesa. Carolyn O'Connor from Mesa. Linda Marabee from Mesa. Julie Golding, city not identified. Gail Byrd from Mesa. Renaissance from Tempe. Heather Hammel from Phoenix. Dominique Van Desant from Paradise Valley. Stefan Spriggs from Mesa. Radim Robinson, Phoenix. Jay Gitrich, city not identified. Diane Post, Phoenix. Lucy Dorn, Mesa. Amy Coleman, Tempe. Craig Rowenstein, city not identified. Elizabeth Venable, Mesa. Judith Alberg, presumably Mesa. Sheila Ogea, Mesa. Ronaldo Fowler, Phoenix. Tom Haas, city not identified. Allison Yoder, city not identified. Okay, I will now invite forward the 12 people that have been identified as speaking on behalf of everyone on this topic. First person is Ryan Tate. Ryan, please come forward and give us your address, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Mayor and distinguished members, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Ryan Tate. I live at 3355 East Hopi Avenue in Mesa. I'm the owner of a law firm also located in Mesa. I'm a owner of a law firm also located in Mesa. My partner and I practice primarily in the area of criminal defense. In addition to sharing my own thoughts, I've been asked by the Arizona Attorneys for Criminal Justice to share their thoughts with the council tonight. Members, this is a bad idea for several reasons. As a, as someone who's practiced in the area of criminal law for the entirety of my career, I know quite a bit about what it means to have meaningful visits with my clients. Those cannot be effectively done over video visits. So the Securus proposed solution to the difficulty in obtaining in-person visits with clients is not a satisfactory one. Securus is the subject of several lawsuits in various states because they've been caught recording privileged conversations between attorneys and their clients, which makes it unsettling for attorneys to be able to use that platform. It's also insufficient to allow us to review certain types of evidence with our clients. This is significant in the city of Mesa because Mesa contracts with private attorneys for public defense services who are going to be required to now make in-person visits to Florence, which is much, I take issue or I guess I disagree with the Honorable Judge. It's much easier to visit clients in Maricopa County jails than it is to visit clients in the, in the prison facility. And I've done both. I've represented federal inmates in, in this CoreCivic facility. I have many clients in the Maricopa County jail. Much, much easier to do so in Maricopa County for several reasons. I didn't hear anyone explain why exactly it would be easier or beneficial to transport inmates from Florence. There's no doubt that there's some inefficiencies in transporting people from Maricopa County. I think that those same inefficiencies exist transporting from Florence. There's no indication that it would be any better. It's a longer distance. We know that at least. The judge is right. The Honorable Judge Tafoya is correct that the statute does require judges to offer work release for some sentenced convicted individuals. The difference is that somebody who is sentenced to serve time in Maricopa County jail can walk out of the jail when they get work release. They can get on public transportation and they can ride it to their own, their place of employment. That's not easily done from Florence. Many of the crimes for which misdemeanor convicts are going to be spending time in custody require that their license be suspended or revoked. And so by requiring them to serve their time in Florence, you're now taking people who would be able to use public transportation to keep their jobs and to remain essentially productive members of society, you're going to put them out in a location where they're not able to drive to and from work, where they're not able to have public transportation get them to and from work.
Mr. Tate, your time's up. Could you wrap it up, please?
Judge, the, gentlemen, the jail incarceration costs are not less what they've, the figures that they've cited is what the actual facility charges. It doesn't have anything to do with the cost. I think the most significant reason to oppose this is that there shouldn't ever be a financial incentive for incarcerating our citizens. And multiple studies have shown that that's precisely what happens when private prisons take over what should be a public duty sector, a public sector duty.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Please don't do that. We're, again, we've got a big, thick stick, a stack of people to get through if we take a minute or two or, please don't do that or we're going to have to figure out how to get out of here faster. Raina Montoya, please. I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you, Raina. Could you please state your address? You'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Raina Montoya. My address is 2264 South Deerfield Lane, Gilbert, Arizona. And I grew up in District Four. My parents still own that house, so thank you so much for allowing me to speak here today. There are many different problematic things around having private prisons. As many have stated, one is the lack of transparency. As Mr. Whitaker actually stated, we have seen many different, many different problems, especially around contracts. When people have to file complaints specifically in regards to sexual abuse or any others, we have seen that is extremely problematic around EVOY detention facility, that people are not able to do that. So we hear it day and day. We work with many communities who are predominantly Latino and people of color, and then they're constantly coming to us, letting us know that they're not able to file complaints, that they have faced multiple, multiple medical neglects that they get nowhere. So then we have seen that it is really bad policy to actually have profits from people who are actually behind bars. If, as stated in this, in this city council before, if it is your responsibility to ensure we don't have more people in prisons, where are we going to provide incentives for prisons to actually have more people behind bars? So what I ask you today, as someone who grew up in Mesa, do we want to be known as the city that is actually going to be the first one to privatize jails? Is that, is that pretty much like reputation that we want to have as a city of Mesa, where instead of actually bringing people to rehabilitate and actually be reintroduced and reenter our society, we want to keep them behind prisons without access to actually be productive citizens of our city? Thank you.
Thank you, Raina. You know, I like this gentleman in the back. He's doing one of the, you know, the jazz hands when he likes what people are doing. Feel free to do that. Kathleen Ron. What's that?
Hello, my name's Kathleen Ron. I live at 3759 North Kings Peak in Mesa. And mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity, also to the employees of the city who do such a great job. As a responsible citizen, I want to make sure Mesa is a safe city for all families and individuals. There's a strong body of research that illustrates that jailing without prevention efforts is ineffective and actually harms communities with a high rate of poverty. And unfortunately, that applies to Mesa. I believe we can do better than this. Maricopa County has a new sheriff, Paul Penzone, who is striving to change practices of the office and promote strengthened relationships between the department and Maricopa County citizens. I believe problem solving should be done, just as Judge Tafoya said, there's a problem with multiple locations. Perhaps that's an area you could sit down with the new sheriff and figure out ways to solve that problem. I have great respect for the Mesa police and the city council. I had the pleasure of riding along with a police officer as part of the Mesa Leadership Program, and I was so impressed with the skills that our police officers need to keep our community safe. And I just believe there's a better way to focus on prevention and diversion efforts while making sure that those who do not respect the rule of law receive a consequence. As a school psychologist, I represent several other mental health professionals in the audience and well aware that more treatment options for persons with mental illness in Arizona, that there are many needs that we have. An untreated mental illness forces police officers to be the first responders to these kinds of situations. We need to work together as a community to address these efforts through better access to mental health treatment rather than creating incentives to increase arrests and incarceration. There's also a large body of evidence that communities with high rates of poverty incur the highest levels of arrests. I know that there are projects underway in the state through the Department of Education to address many of our disengaged youth who end up being parts of this system. My hope is that the city of Mesa will lead in efforts to find more creative and family-centered solutions to the issues of community safety. I do not see that making a private prison contract goes towards that aim. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you very much. Cynthia Estella. Next up will be Ron Redlin after Cynthia.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Estella, and I am giving my time to Chanel Poe.
Good evening, Mayor Giles, city council members. My name is the Honorable Chanel Poe.
Now, would you state your address, please?
No problem. 3330 East Van Buren in Phoenix, Arizona. I am an elected governing board member for the Vault School District, and I wanted to share with you an excerpt from a op-ed that I made for the Huffington Post. According to the ACLU, repeat offenders often think that they will not get caught. There are 34 million serious crimes committed each year, but only 3 million result in arrests. To someone who feels like they're option, they're out of options, these stats can be alluring. Bringing private prisons to our city and bringing this type of recognition to Arizona is very harmful. We see private prisons as modern-day slavery. We know that there is more cost associated with the private prisons. We also realize that there are atrocious conditions, and we see a lot of this affecting our immigrant community. As a leader in education, we are doing our best to even reduce student suspension, which has remotely led to the school-to-prison pipeline. Books like this should not be created because students of color feel as if, that they're going to be faced with unfair opportunities and biases. I trust that the questions that you ask tonight will make you make one of the best decisions that you can and not vote in favor of making private, making profit over bodies. I stand in solidarity and I'm completely and vehemently against private prisons, and I know that you will make the best decision. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, again, as indicated, Ron Redlin is next. Following Mr. Redlin, we'll hear from Barry McCain.
Hello, Mayor, Council, and Chief. I wanted to come today and talk to, tell you that I'm representing ACLU, People Power, Mesa, Arizona. We wanted to tell you today that we oppose what you're doing. Private prisons are morally objectionable because companies make their money by keeping people in cages for profit. And data has shown that inmates receive health care that is significantly substandard, putting their lives at higher risk than publicly-run facilities. I want to get into that more detail, but first, let me digress and mention so that you and the audience knows all the different groups that are here today. We have representatives from the following groups that had planned to speak. Arizona Attorneys for Criminal Justice, Arizona Center for Disability Law, Arizona Justice Alliance, American Civil Liberties Union, Our People Power Group, Abolish Private Prisons, American Friends Service Committee, Black Lives Matter, Central Arizona National Lawyers Guild, East Valley Patriots, Indivisible AZCD5, Justice That Works, LD17 Democrats, LD19 Democrats, LD25 Democrats, LD29 Democrats, Lucha, Living United for Change in Arizona, Maricopa County Democratic Party, NAACP, and Progress Democrats of America, East Valley Chapter. And I'm sure I've missed a couple, so I apologize. It's a wonderfully wide and diverse population that opposes this. We've not yet heard anybody in support, but those are all of the organizations who have members in Mesa that oppose this. Some of the things that I heard just when you were asking questions bother me. If you look at CCA's annual reports, you'll see that prisoners are actually calculated as growth commodities on their corporate balance sheets. In the 1980s, CCA of America pioneered the idea of running for prisons. Their CEO at the time told Inc. Magazine, "You sell it like you sell cars, or real estate, or hamburgers." Health care is one of the major costs and account is only second to staffing. So CCA has a history of both understaffing, both their guards and their medical staff.
Mr. Redlin, your time's up. If you could wrap it up, please.
Okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Redlin. Again, Barry McCain is the next speaker, followed by Ken Alberg.
Good evening, Mayor Giles and City Council. My name is Barry McCain from Arizona City. It's 12573 South Calumet Road, Arizona City, which is right next to EVOY, if some of you want to know where it is. I was born in Mesa, raised in Queen Creek, drafted from Channel High. Private prisons are not cost-effective. I'm also a registered lobbyist for Arizona Veterans with Disabilities. I don't give you Potemkin numbers as been put out here before. I'll tell you the truth. The fact is this: Private prisons or jails are not good for the safety of either the inmates or staff. Private prisons concern the budget, they cost more than it would cost with the state. There is nothing that I can say to you that would justify privatizing. It was 1,000 beds. This year, Governor Ducey wants to guarantee 2,000 beds, whether there's a person in the bed or not, that CCA will be paid for. This is exactly the opposite way we need to go. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm telling you right now, if you do care for us, then you do not care for private prisons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Next is Ken Alberg, followed by Roman Ullman.
Mayor Giles, Vice Mayor Luna, and council members, my name is Ken Alberg. I live at 9357 East Nora Street in Mesa. I am opposed to my city contracting with CoreCivic to provide jail and transportation services to people accused of and sentenced for misdemeanor offenses. Cities and other levels of government should not farm out their core correctional services to private for-profit companies. The private prison industry makes its money not by providing goods and services to customers, but rather makes money solely from government and solely for locking humans in cages, mostly for nonviolent offenses. CoreCivic and the private prison industry have actively lobbied for tougher sentencing laws. As a member of the American Legislative Exchange Council, the corporatist political group known as ALEC, CoreCivic helps bring legislators and corporations together to draft bills that are then introduced at various levels of government, but primarily at the state level. Forbes Magazine, and not NPR in this instance, in August 2011 reported ALEC helped pioneer some of the toughest sentencing laws on the books today, like mandatory minimums for nonviolent drug offenders, three-strikes laws, and truth in sentencing laws. The article goes on to say, "ALEC arranged secret meetings between Arizona state legislators and CCA," now CoreCivic, "to help draft what became SB 1070, Arizona's notorious immigration law, to keep CoreCivic prisons flush with immigrant detainees." And I have not seen a retraction of that allegation. ALEC and its corporate members have proven extremely good at crafting ways to help for-profit prisons benefit from the country's massive prison population. And as a result, the US prison rates are the highest in the world, and our prison occupancy rate overall is over 107% today. At last Thursday's city council study session, I learned Mesa largely through its judicial system, is trying to divert offenders away from incarceration in jails and into programs that will restore them to active and lawful engagement in society. If that is the case, then I would suggest, to a larger degree, the city of Mesa and CoreCivic are working at cross purposes. Let's be honest here. CoreCivic's major and only goal is to incarcerate. More prisoners equals a greater bottom line. Please do not move ahead with this proposed contract. I thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Roman Ullman, followed by Vincent Salazar.
Mayor Giles, Honorable Council, and other people present here today. You have a statement that I have put together before you, but I'm going to read it for the record, and I'm going to try to be expeditious because there are a couple of other things I want to add.
Roman, quickly, your address.
My address is 1824 North 103rd Street, Mesa, Arizona, 85207. I have served on the Mesa Parks Board. I've served on the Master Plan Committee and on various Voters Committee and various issues that have been put before the voters in order to get resources into Mesa. I have brought conventions into Mesa. I have also brought events into Mesa, and I did so because Mesa is a family's community and has a positive image. My family has a business in Mesa. We've had that for over 25 years. I would have never believed that our city would have stooped to doing business with a corporation that makes profits on families' misery, that Mesa would be so callous to send our citizens many miles out of our community and place additional hardships on their families. I can't believe that after we voted for many Mesa ballot issues, our city is now investing our taxes in prisons for profit. our taxes in prisons for profit. This action is so un-American, so un-Christian, so inhumane, and so negative in many, many ways. It gives everyone the message that Mesa cares more about money than we care about people and our families. Prisons for profit are less safe. Inmate violence and violence towards staff is much higher in private prisons than in government prisons. Private prisons pay employees less and have higher turnover rates. There have been many legal actions taken against private prisons due to violation of inmates' rights. Also, there have been many other problems in private prisons as a whole. Churches and religious committees and communities are opposed to profit-making for the punishment of our fellow human beings and are also against prisons for profit industry. And I can tell you that because I served on All Saints Parish Council for three years as the chairman. I've spoken with Father Robert, and our church is against this. I am certain that communities, institutions, and businesses do not want to be located near private prisons. So why would we spend money and taxes to benefit such an operation? The people would be thinking twice coming to Mesa or investing in Mesa. Your action will hurt our business community, our economy, and Mesa's positive image. Do not take this harmful action. Do not take this insensitive action. Do not make life more difficult for Mesa families to benefit an out-of-state corporation. And let me just say one thing: I don't believe that our friends from the prison industry are being honest with us. Otherwise, they would not negotiate a contract with the state of Michigan that pays them for prison beds whether people are incarcerated or not. Why would they not negotiate a contract that would be on a per person there? The other thing is--
Roman, you're out of time.
I will say this very quickly. The other thing is, I want to know how many of our visitors who come here for sports events and other things are going to feel if their fans are dragged off to a private prison, God knows where, if they happen to get drunk or do something else. It's not going to help our visitors.
Thank you, Roman. Next is Vincent Salazar, followed by Martin Quazada.
Hi, my name is Vincent Salazar. I'm here to cede my time to Heather Hammel from Justice That Works.
Thank you, Heather. Could we have your address, please?
Yes, it's Phoenix, Arizona. I'm here on behalf of Justice That Works and also speaking for Metro Arizona, the Southwest I won't reiterate some of the points that have been made, but I do want to correct a few statements, a few false statements that were made by CCA when they came, or CoreCivic when they came and testified before you. The first was, there were some questions about whether or not the individuals who you were talking about in the Eloy Detention Facility, whether we were talking about federal prisons or individuals who were convicted of felonies. Eloy Detention Facility is an immigration detention facility. It does not house individuals who have been convicted of felonies. It houses immigrants, and in lots of times, it houses families and children and babies. And so I think it's important to note, because I think there seems to be a desire to create a distinction between unsafe conditions in federal prisons and what you would expect by housing misdemeanor populations. We're talking about children and families, and you're talking about the assaults and sexual assaults and homicides and suicides, and even the suicides within those facilities. I know that both the police department and CoreCivic wanted to dismiss those as CoreCivic having no responsibility. But actually, if you look at the Human Rights Report, which has investigated 31 deaths inside CoreCivic facilities, they found that, including suicides, they found that all of those suicides were a result of extreme medical neglect. And part of that is improper staffing, improper training, refusal to provide medical treatment when there were clear signs that individuals needed assistance. And part of it, too, is the overuse and abuse of solitary confinement, which greatly exacerbates mental health issues. So these are the conditions that you're going to be exposing Mesa residents to, and this is the history of this company. I mean, if you just do a random Google search, you will see investigative report after investigative report, both by the federal government, by multiple news agencies, ever since this organization has been in existence. And so I would question why you would want to give your money, why you would want to give taxpayer money to a corporation that has such a well-documented and lethal history, why you would want to expose your residents to this type of mistreatment. The other part that I wanted to correct, too, or comment upon, is the idea that Council Member Whitaker brought up, which is the business model for CoreCivic. And it's very straightforward. They've always set up shop, and then the next move is to develop relationships with local politicians to try to increase sentencing laws and to create new criminal laws.
Your time is up. Could you please wrap it up?
Yeah. Council Member Thompson asked what laws the courts were enforcing, and as the judge said, a lot of those are city code violations. And what you may see replicated, what you've seen in state after state, is an increase in new city code violations and an increase in the length of sentences that you would see there. They've also successfully lobbied for harsher laws and harsher penalties in the state of Arizona, and you are going to give them money, which is going to contribute to their lobbying efforts overall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Martin Quazada. Martin, followed by Dr. Matthew Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and to your city manager. My name is Martin Quazada. I live at 5150 NORTH 99TH AVE. That's in West Phoenix. I'm an elected school board member. I'm also an elected state senator. And I can tell you, at the state of Arizona, my number-one fight, one of my number-one fights, has been against the private prison industry. I can tell you that the lobby, as it probably did here, starts off with promises of efficiency, higher public safety, and cost savings for police, fire, and EMS and other needed services. I can promise you that lobby will evolve to requests for expansion, for guaranteed occupancy, for elimination of safety and cost audits, all under the guise of saving you and Mesa money. The reality is, this is a higher risk, higher liability, and higher cost for Mesa taxpayers. The reality is that this is an invitation for the private prison lobby and the perception of doubt regarding judicial neutrality, which there were some great questions asked about. Our judiciary has been neutral, and the debate about the extent of that neutrality has been a debate for all of our country's history. But I can tell you, with the presence of that private prison lobby, that will only further the debate about how neutral our judiciary actually is. The city of Mesa here is at a critical point in the history, not only for the city of Mesa, but for the state of Arizona. You can set Mesa and Arizona on a good or on a bad path. You can set a good or a bad precedent for other cities and towns that are watching you for your decisions here today. You can send a strong message to a lobby that other governments across the nation are already starting to send. Mesa doesn't need to do this. There are cities across this state who feel that they need to do it because their options are limited. Mesa has the ability to absorb some costs. You have the ability to make smarter budget decisions, to make cuts in other areas. You have the ability to further develop what is already a strong economy. Mesa can choose to not further the profit off of the backs of those who are suffering from substance abuse, mental illness, and poverty. Mesa cannot make human beings items that are to be bought and sold, and Mesa can abide by a moral standard by voting this down here today. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'll close off by saying, there were some great questions that were asked here today to the industry that's here proposing this issue here for you. You heard some questions about how they would generate revenue and how they would reduce costs regarding operations, infrastructure, and revenue. What that really means is that their profit will always trump safety, because they were always seeking to raise their profit. When public safety is your number-one goal, their number-one goal is profit. And when profit is number one, public safety will always be number two. Diversification of services as well, that means that they are offering more services where profit will trump public safety. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I ask you to reject item 10A. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Senator, thank you for your service. We appreciate what you do at the legislature. You're a good advocate for cities, and so regardless of this issue, I want you to know we appreciate your service.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Thank you very much. Matthew Whitaker, followed by Megan Rakaric.
Honorable John Giles, Mayor, distinguished council members, city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney. My name is Matthew Whitaker. I live at 3653 EAST Ellis STREET, MESA, 85205. I was a one-time member of the Mesa Human Relations Commission. I am now on the executive committee for the Mesa Martin Luther King Holiday Committee. I am also a founding member of Just Communities Arizona, which is based in Mesa. And I ask you, from the bottom of my heart, to oppose this proposal. Privatization of jails and prisons is morally dubious and systematically unjust, particularly for our most vulnerable populations. The very idea of privatization may be seductive in the face of rising jailing costs, but we must not sacrifice the moral high ground at the altar of fiscal relief and profit motivation. Attorney John Dacey argues that, and I quote, "Privatization has led to prisoners being calculated as growth commodities on corporate balance sheets. Shareholders are fiscally rewarded when private prison populations increase." And as a black man and an African American and a historian of civil and human rights, I find that extremely troubling, given the 246-year history of slavery in this country and another 100 years of Jim Crow. These corporations thrive on recidivism. This practice, sponsored by government, is inherently flawed and filled with economic conflicts of interest that violate the life and liberty guarantee in the Constitution of our United States. Private jails and prisons, number one, disproportionately harm people of color; number two, often eschew proper training for their administrations and staff; number three, have two to three times the number of violent assaults and incidents; number four, have been cited for serving putrid food; number five, have faced nursing strikes stemming from poor health conditions; and number six, has charged inmates up to one minute to speak to family members. Why are we allocating funds for something like this when we could be allocating funds to education to solve a long-term problem so that we do not have the number of people that are going into our jail system? We should not mortgage our future, our children's future, by using a terribly unwise and unconstitutional strategy to solve a short-term problem that is better solved through long-term solutions. Dealing with crime and punishment is a quintessentially government function that should not be delegated to the marketplace. Above all, and I stress this, as a person of faith, as many of you are, I find no basis from within it to support a privatization movement whose very existence has roots in American chattel slavery and Jim Crow and the oppression of immigrants and people of color and a contemporary record fueled by profit-seeking and market neglect, exploitation, and injustice. Future generations will judge us by what we do now, and a higher authority is watching all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. I think you folks know you can bend the rules because we're down to the last person, right? Megan Rakaric, please. That's not an invitation to clap after Megan.
All right. It's Megan Rakaric.
Megan, please give me your address. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all for allowing me to speak today. My address is 4723 SOUTH COUNTRY CLUB WAY. I do live in Tempe. However, I am a proud resident of all of East Valley, and I'm here representing myself and all of my East Valley neighbors. I'm not part of any community association or anything like that, so. I have torn apart my prepared notes as we've gone here. I actually have more questions in here now than comments, and so if you can humor me and answer any of those, I'd appreciate that as well. So, private prisons have one goal. Their goal is to make profits for their shareholders. The safety of the community, employees, and inmates are a very small part of that equation, if it exists at all. We have already discussed revenues, but private prisons also have to find ways in succeeding to cut costs if they are a private corporation. The way that they cut costs by having 60% to 70% of the costs of running a private prison being their employees is to lower wages. Private prisons pay, on average, for entry-level employees about $6,000 less a year. They do not provide adequate training for their employees, for their safety, for the safety of the inmates, and the safety of the community as they transport those inmates. Employee turnover rates in private facilities have been reported to be as high as 90%, while state-run facilities are averaging about 25%. In order to guarantee profits, private prisons ask for guarantees of occupancy levels many times. I don't know if that is part of the contract you guys are considering. And I do applaud Mesa for beginning the program that was mentioned earlier that allows for the pre-trial release, and I hope that does bring down some of the numbers. But I am curious to know what kinds of guarantees of occupancy levels you guys are offering to this company and this deal. In the cases where there are lower occupancy requirements, we run into a more sinister problem. When private prisons make money by keeping incarceration rates high, they have zero incentive to rehabilitate inmates, and this practice makes everyone less safe and is, frankly, immoral. It's common practice for local or state-run facilities to retain the high-risk and costly inmates that private prisons are not secure enough to house. So that is another question I have for you. At what point are there inmates that you would not want to send to this facility, and who takes on the cost of housing those, and where are those inmates held, as well as inmates who have medical conditions that maybe the facility can't support? And I'm going to jump over to the comments of Ronaldo Fowler here to comment a little bit about providing services for those who have disabilities. We want to understand the obligation of this company under the ADA and ensure compliance with all of the ADA rules. We want to know--
Megan, you're out of time. If you could wrap up, please.
Okay. We're going to want to know how they're able to better communicate with their council, correctional staff, communicate with medical personnel, communicate with their family if they're doing it over video conference and they have some sort of limitation on communication. Finally, private prisons employ lobbyists. We know that. I don't care what they say. They argue for two primary goals: to increase prison populations by expanding the lists of acts considered criminal and to protect private prisons from needing to comply with the Freedom of Information Act, which is how you can find out what happens to folks in prison and is not kept secret and swept under the rug.
Thank you, Megan.
Question, Mayor?
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitaker.
Not for her. I'd like to request, if I can motion for just a 10-minute recess with my assistant. There's been a lot of disputed facts, and I'd like to just see if there's any verification of what CoreCivic said in regards to some of the allegations.
Okay, it is 7:34. I think that's a reasonable request. We will take a 10-minute recess and come back for, to wrap things up. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. If you could please take your seats. We're going to start here in just a few moments. Let me compliment everyone again for the very civil manner that you've conducted yourselves. I appreciate it. I know everyone's here in good faith, and I do appreciate the great respect that was demonstrated for our speakers on all sides tonight, so thank you very much. We, it's been 10 minutes, and I know Mr. Whitaker is joining us. There we go, very presently. All right. There were a couple of questions. If you don't mind, maybe before we start discussion, one of our last speakers, Megan, did ask a series of questions. And so if you don't mind, I'm going to throw, the ones that I jotted down that were raised, I might just throw those out again before we start commenting. And Chief, maybe you're the best one to quarterback this. A couple of questions she asked was, and we answered this one last Thursday morning, but it was relative to whether or not inmates are going to be rejected because of health concerns. Can you remind us what the status of that issue is?
Mayor, members of council, very similar to what our similar process is currently. Currently, when misdemeanor prisoners are taken to Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, if by chance there's any medical issues, they are checked out at a medical facility. Some will get clearance and then be booked into that facility. And others, if it becomes more comprehensive, are chosen to cite and release or a long-form complaint, which is other methods, so they're basically released from custody. The same process is available at the CoreCivic. If there's issues, they would contact our holding facility. If medical solutions aren't resolved, then we have the option to release them as well.
Thank you. So essentially, it's the same policy that county sheriff's office is having?
Similar process, and we have certainly input into the release of those prisoners as well. And it's a conference of determining, is it in the best interest to release to get better medical care, or if it could be cleared and then they'll remain in custody, depending on those circumstances. Or if it could be cleared and then they'll remain in custody, depending on the circumstances.
Another question that Megan had was, are there guaranteed occupancy levels that the city is guaranteeing to CoreCivic?
Right. There are no guaranteed occupancy levels. What was presented from the business model standpoint of, it was just a history of our arrests and bookings and housing of prisoners, and they're required to come up with a proposal of what that costing would be. So we have no requirements or pay for any certain amount. It's only by those that are brought to jail or are in custody for misdemeanor offenses.
Thank you. And I think one of our first speakers, the defense attorney, asked a couple of questions I wanted to follow up with. He questioned our assertion that transporting would be somehow easier under this arrangement versus the current system. Can you compare and contrast the city's obligation with regard to transporting prisoners?
Right. Certainly. Currently, we have civilian detention staff that transports our prisoners or any misdemeanors or felonies from our facility down to county in Phoenix. Under this contract, we would not be transporting to Florence at all. They would be, it's a transportation model. They would be coming to our facility, picking up any prisoners that are being held, and would take them to their facility and then would return them, and they would be released from our facility as well.
So that would eliminate the police officer or detention officer staff time associated with driving inmates to and from the downtown Phoenix facility?
That's correct. They would still go to Phoenix for some of the felony encusties, but their turnaround times would be substantially lower because of the much lower volume at the times they do go.
And another question, the question of work release came up again, and I tried to ask this question an hour or two ago, and Judge Tofoya commented on it, but if, let's say someone is eligible for work release and they're being jailed in Florence, how is that different from if they're being jailed in downtown Phoenix?
Really, there's a couple options. If the work release is to be, say, released over the weekend or at night or during the day for their job, whatever the case may be, they're actually brought back to our facility, so they're not released from Florence. They would be released from Mesa, similar to any other release in that term. So everything comes back to Mesa in that regard, and then they would be able to move to their work release. And then when they check back in to go back to serve their sentence, they would check back into Mesa and be re-transported.
So they wouldn't have the need to provide transportation from Florence? They'd be transported to Mesa and then onto their jobs from there?
That's correct. The release point would be back in Mesa.
All right. Thank you. Counsel, those were the questions that I jotted down that I weren't, I thought perhaps wasn't quite clear prior. Any other questions or comments from counsel at this point? Mr. Whitaker?
I know it's been long, and I thank you guys for bearing with me. There's one individual that didn't get an opportunity to speak, and I'd just like to request one additional three-minute speech, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. If you think it's important, I'm happy to accommodate that. Who is that?
J.J. Johnson.
J.J. Johnson. I thought I read J.J. Johnson's name. You know what, Jad? You were in the stack, so I think this might be my mistake. I'm pretty sure you were supposed to speak, so. Thank you. I apologize if I neglected to call your name.
Mayor, counsel, thank you for the opportunity.
No, actually, you were in the other stack. I recall now, but-
Okay.
Take it away, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. I am the president of the Black Phoenix Institute. That is a policy institute that has sort of calved out of Black Lives Matter, but we represent people across the state. With all due respect to Judge Tofoya, he did not completely answer the questions about attorneys having face-to-face visits, nor did anybody address the cost of people being, using the video visitation. Securists will have substantial charges involved with people using the video visitation. That is another cost that is being passed on to consumers. The, you asked very narrowly about two facilities with, run by CCA. So you didn't ask about Swaro, so you didn't hear about the murders of Bronson Nanuha and Clifford Medina. Clifford Medina was strangled by a man he had told CCA was out to get him. Not only was he strangled by him, they put him in a cell with him. So he was strangled to death. Bronson Nanuha was stabbed 140 times, and the gang carved their name in his chest. CCA has no ability to parse out that population from people going to medical and other services. So while the pod that Mesa's detainees would be housed in might be Mesa-specific, I haven't heard a word from CCA about how they're going to keep them sterile from the rest of the facility when they have to go for services. We haven't heard a lot about, we haven't heard a lot about transport for persons with disabilities. I can tell you, and my day job, I'm a criminal defense investigator, I can tell you that CCA frequently lifts people in and out of vans, exposing them to fall hazards. And the last thing that I'm going to wrap up with, in direct response to Councilman Whitaker, SB 1070 was written by a man named Chris Kobach. Chris Kobach is a paid lobbyist for Alec. That's the American Legislative Exchange Council. So Alec is, CCA was one of the major contributors to that, to CCA. So it's a, or CCA was a major contributor to Alec, and Alec and Chris Kobach wrote SB 1070 with Russell Pierce. So I appreciate you taking my comments. Of course, we are in opposition. This feels like you are rushing into this. This demands more study, more time. It's a five-year-old RFP, and all of a sudden, we're drinking out of a fire hose. That is not good governance.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right. Thank you. Counsel?
Just one parting statement that I wrote that I'd like to address counsel with. I know I sit in the minority on this council, and I only have one final last thought, and then I'm finished. On council, we only need, we not only need to weigh the immediate fiscal impact of our decisions on the city, but we have got to have the foresight to understand the long-term effects of our decision, detrimental or otherwise. Is there anyone on this council that believes we need more lobbyists at City Hall? I don't. In fact, I believe money in our political system creates this form of crony capitalism that's destroying our country, or this hybrid privatization of big government. Currently, today, the unions are so powerful that they write our city's administrative policies. That in itself is unacceptable, yet we open the door to another major lobbyist group with arms wide open. And I know some up here will say lobbyist groups are normal. I would agree. Unfortunately, they are normal. But there's a big difference in this instance. In this instance, there are human beings involved in the process. Our human beings, our citizens, our residents, the ones we took an oath to protect. With that being said, I will never support a measure in which we commoditize our citizens. Now, I know I'm in the minority in this council in this decision, but I would strongly urge my colleagues to reconsider opening Pandora's box on this issue. Let's wait and see what Penzone can do to clean up the mess he was left with.
Ladies and gentlemen-
Do the right thing!
Okay. I'm going to count. Okay, I hereby withdraw my compliment from earlier about your civility. That was inappropriate. If you do it again, I will clear the room. And I'm, all you want, but you're breaking the rules. Okay, counsel, now is, sir? Okay, let's be clear. The next person that disrupts is going to be escorted out of this room. Police, would you please, the next person disrupts, would you please escort them out of the room? Okay, thank you very much. It's now time for counsel to make comments and entertain a motion, perhaps. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my initial thoughts at the beginning of the process was looking and studying the viability of the private jail. I was motivated because of my aversion to Ten City. Since that time, Sheriff Penzone has indicated that Ten City will no longer be used to house detainees convicted of misdemeanors. I've actually spoken with the sheriff several times, seeking relief with the cost associated with housing detainees. He said it would take approximately one year to conduct a thorough evaluation, how fees are structured, and charged to cities. He's also, he's very much open for feedback. I just don't want to be impetuous and make a decision to seek relief outside Maricopa County to transport our detainees. I don't see why, as a city, we couldn't wait a year to make this final determination. I think it's prudent of us that, given the bid proposal dating back from 2012, to wait until all our options are exhausted before we embark in this kind of arrangement. I have heard from several of my constituents, many who are present in this room, who have voiced their concern and vehemently oppose engaging with a private jail. Therefore, I will not be supporting the request to contract with CoreCivic.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? I'm happy to share my thoughts at this point. I do appreciate everyone who's here. I think that people are here in good faith, and I know that those of you who have spoken out against this proposal come at this from a good place. And you are concerned about human rights. You're concerned about preserving constitutional rights. You're concerned about what you perceive as an evil, and so I compliment you for being passionate about it and for being here. I want people to understand how we got to this point. Several years ago, when our council took on this question, it was not out of an indifference to human rights. Quite the contrary is true. You may recall that for the last several years, the status of the Maricopa County jail system has been the subject of much debate. And many of you who are advocates for human rights and for constitutional rights for the last several years have been asking bodies like this to do something about the Maricopa County jail system. That is the context that this proposal was initiated five years ago, is exploring an alternative to sending people to the Maricopa County jail system. A moment ago, there's been a lot of conversation tonight about the safe, the relative safety of the Florence facility and the downtown Phoenix jail. What you heard is the cold, hard facts, regardless of anecdotal evidence that people want to bring up. What you heard is that the deaths per thousand are a third in the, with this company as compared to the very problematic facility that is in downtown Phoenix, that you are all asking us to please continue to send people to. Those are the cold, hard facts. This is how jail reform happens, ladies and gentlemen. What you want is jail reform, and you are arguing against it tonight. I'm sorry. So here's what our obligation is. Here's what my obligation is. Sir, if you speak out, you're going to be escorted out. Here's what our obligation is. Number one is to provide a constitutional jail. Now, I and several of my fellow council members have personally toured both facilities, and I can tell you that if I or a loved one found myself in the unfortunate situation of having been convicted of a misdemeanor in our community, there is absolutely no question, it is an apples-to-orange comparison, as to which facility I would want that person to go to. I, when I was touring the county jail system, I met with, again, the supervisors in the sheriff's office that run that facility, and I asked them, "Does this facility comply with federal standards?" "No, it does not." "Does this facility comply with industry standards? Are you certified by the various organizations that certify jails and prisons in the United States?" "No, it does not." "Why is that?" The prior sheriff was not interested in complying with any of those standards. The opposite is true for the facility in Florence. It is both, it complies with federal standards, and it has all the certifications of the national organizations. So in terms of meeting my obligation to send people to constitutional jails, it's more clear to me that I am meeting that obligation by going to the Florence facility versus the downtown Fourth Avenue facility. And again, ladies and gentlemen, the, I would invite you, hopefully at some point, you'll have the opportunity to do what I've done and tour those two facilities. The Maricopa, the downtown, I compliment the county supervisors and Sheriff Penzone for doing the very best they can at the downtown facility. But that is a very intense place that is more reminiscent of a mental health facility than it is of a jail. They are asked to do extraordinary things there. It is a scared-straight experience to walk through the Maricopa County jail. Contrast that to the facility that we're talking about sending. Again, ladies and gentlemen, these are not at-high-risk inmates. These are folks that are guilty of low-class misdemeanors, and it's literally a situation of housing them for three to five days and on the high side for the most, for the most part. The next obligation that I have as an elected official is to preserve the financial strength of our organization, its costs. And again, this is a, there's just no comparison when it comes to the costs. The booking fee at Maricopa County is 325, as opposed to zero with this facility. The per diem is 101 at Maricopa County versus 67. I think that the estimates of a $2 million cost savings per year actually dramatically understate the cost savings that we're going to experience, because what's not factored in, you heard that this chief talk about, the high amount of time that our detention officers and police officers are required to spend in transporting officers, that function is being entirely eliminated under the new proposal. I think that we have an, our city budget was raised earlier by some of our public safety personnel. The city of Mesa is experiencing some financial difficulty. Here's the situation in the city of Mesa. We are, we're very proud of the fact that we don't tax people very much here. This is the largest city in the United States that doesn't have a primary property tax. We do not tax groceries, which makes us unique. Our sales tax is extremely low. It's a fraction above Gilbert and Chandler, dramatically less than the rest of the valley. What that, you brag when you have one of those things going for your community. When you have all three of those things going, you struggle to find ways to pay for things. And that's why we go to all of our departments, including public safety, and tell them that they have to reduce their budget. That's what we did this year. And at the same time, Mesa is growing at a dramatic rate right now. We have the, we're back in explosive growth mode. So we, there's a lot of fiscal, financial pressure on our city. As a result of that, we went to all of our public safety departments and said, "You need to help us save money." In a very innovative way, the police department has figured out a way to save $2 million. Had they, had been forced to find other ways to do that, it would have meant a reduction in police officers, and it would have had an impact on public safety. So kudos to the police department for actually coming up with a very innovative way to find, to save money. The larger issue, and I think the one that is motivating most of the folks here, is an issue that I'm not sure that we can satisfy, that we can resolve at the Mesa City Government Issue, and that's the perverse incentive, the profit motive behind being in the incarceration business, that this business in and of, you know, just is inherently evil. And again, I don't know that we're going to be able to resolve that issue here. Incarcerating people is a necessary function of government. I think there's a lot of portions of criminal justice that cannot be delegated to anyone but the state. We're not going to have rent-a-cops out arresting people. We're not going to have rented judges deciding who goes to jail. But once you get, once, but I don't think that there's no portion of criminal justice that can't be privatized, and I think this might be one of the appropriate places to do that. I'm not here because I'm, I'm not here to make friends. I'm just here to tell you, well, let me finish. Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is jail reform. This is what you want. We have got, okay, I'm going to be talking to an empty room in just a minute. We have the county's attention. I have met with both of our county supervisors. They, we've got their attention. I've also met with the sheriff. We have their attention. Now is the time for us to work for jail reform. If we back down now, it will be years and years before Maricopa County addresses the serious problem that we have in our jails. I can see that you're not interested in hearing what I have to say.
No, we're not.
Okay. Thank you. That gentleman needs to be escorted out of the room, please. All right. So for that reason, in order to save $2 million per year for my city and to provide a higher standard when it comes to constitutional protection for our inmates, I will be voting in favor of the proposal to take advantage of the contract with CoreCivic. Gentlemen, are there others that, having seen my warm response, would like to chime in?
Yes, I have one last comment. First, I want to commend the police department for looking for cost savings. I know that your budget is tough, and I, in no way, this is more of a philosophical disagreement on the topic, and I commend you guys for doing the best job. Mesa has one of the best police forces in the country, and I truly respect what you guys do. The second thing that I want to touch on what the mayor said is, I believe we have an obligation to give Paul Penzone more than four months to solve this problem. an obligation to give Paul Penzone more than four months to solve this problem. That's not, that's not enough time. How long do we give Sheriff Joe? How much money are we paying? How much money are we paying to the county in fees for all the lawsuits that we've incurred under Joe Arpaio?
Well, again, I would say that if we back down now, we're going to give Paul Penzone years and years, because nothing's going to happen until we hold people's feet to the fire at the county to make some changes.
The last thing I want to talk about is the cost savings. There's a corporate strategy to take over market share where, when you have enough capital-
I'm sorry, Mr. Whitaker.
I'm just saying, there's a corporate strategy where you have enough capital, and if you want to take over market share, you come into the market at really low rates, you take a loss until you take over the market capitalization, and then you execute in raising your prices slowly. And I have a feeling that that's what's underway here. This is going to destroy the county jail system, as we all know. As soon as Mesa pulls out of the county jail system, that cost burden is going to be shifted to every other municipality in this state. They're not going to have a choice but to pull out and privatize their jails as well, because they're not going to be able to afford it, just like we weren't able to afford it. So I think that we're embarking on an extremely dangerous slope here.
Thank you. I think what you're describing is jail reform and doing away with a jail system that is not functioning as it should. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your vote. The motion passes four to two. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you very much. We are adjourned.